Called on the street. When somebody is given that alert, they have the ability to go directly to the scene and determine if a bystander CPR is necessary.
And who should be downloading this app? Someone who's an experienced person in giving CPR?
This app is designed to be good for anybody that's willing to lend a hand. You don't need to have a CPR course. The app does have the ability to coach you through compression only CPR. And anybody I believe can do it. Certainly, though, if you have had a CPR course in the past, that would be very helpful. The app will determine where the location is. It will notify the people who are subscribers to the app that are within a certain distance of the reported location. And it will tell you where the closest AED is and give you all the information that you need to be able to go and lend a hand.
So you mentioned AED. Can you first tell us what that stands for and then why that is important?
What AED is an Automatic External Defibrillator. You probably have seen them a dozen times at the shopping malls, at the airport. They're all over the place. They're usually in a cabinet mounted to a wall somewhere nearby. What those do is actually deliver a shock.
Yeah, I would like to bring the meeting of July fourteenth, twenty twenty one of San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic. Okay, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Vice Chair Clements.
Present.
And Chair Ruth.
Present.
Okay, the next item is public comment. And public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone in the waiting room who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? If there is, you can use the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or you can press star nine on your phone.
Here, see one person who raised hand.
Oh, wonderful. Would like to limit comment to two minutes, please? Please speak.
Gail Goose.
Welcome. Do we have the caller? Is there a caller with a comment about something not on the agenda?
Gail, you are unmuted.
Unmuted.
Gail Goose, you are now unmuted.
It looks like Gail might have some technical difficulties, perhaps?
Well, perhaps we can move on then. If there is nobody else in the waiting room?
Not at this time.
Okay, let's, let's, let's move on in our agenda. And the next item on our agenda is a study session on the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan Progress. And we'll, this study session will provide an overview of the vision plan progress, including community input, best practices, research, and the proposed strategies generated from this process. This is an informational item, and therefore no formal action is requested by the staff. To start off, does the staff have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Ruth. I will be giving the presentation for this item tonight. Just need to advance this. There we go. Thank you again, and good evening, commissioners, and thank you for taking the time to join us this evening for a special study session. And to also all of the community members that are here tonight joining us, and also perhaps those that will be watching the playback of this recording. This particular item, the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan Project, is a project that we began at the beginning of this year. I'm going to be going into the timeline and the process a little bit more, but the purpose of tonight's study session is really to share with the commission together as a group. Because I know that some of you have joined some of the workshops or maybe even watched some of the recordings of the workshops in the past. But we haven't had the opportunity to kind of bring the commission up to speed as a group in total so that we can share with you what has come up and where we're at today and where we're headed. And so this again is a project that started at the beginning of this year. Tonight, we just wanted to clarify that the study session this evening is the first of many meetings and hearings that we will be, that we have scheduled for the adoption process of this vision plan. Tonight is the first study session. It's intended to be informational. This is an opportunity for everybody to learn about the process and the progress, and for the commission to ask us questions. And then also let us know if there's any additional information that the commission feels it needs as we move ahead into the next study session, which is scheduled for August twenty fifth. So tonight, I want to share with the commission a little bit about the project purpose, the approach that we took, the progress we've made, the civic engagement strategy that we employed, and sort of what's surfacing as the ten big moves or ten big planning strategies that have come up and arisen out of all of the community input that we received and to talk about the next steps. So before we get started, we just wanted to introduce the commission to who's working on this project. Of course, it's Al Savae, Community Development Director, and myself, as well as Lisa Costa Sanders, Principal Planner with Good City Company. This is the lead staff on the city side. And the consultant team that we're working with, the lead consultant is Perkins and Will. And tonight, we have joining us, joining us at this study session is DT Sawal. She's a principal with Perkins and Will and the head of urban design, as well as Annie Ryan, who is an urban designer and also the project manager on the Perkins and Will side. Not just Perkins and Will, however, they have a host of subs, sub consultants specializing in traffic, transportation, circulation, economics, and civic engagement as well, civil engineering. So we are supported by a very comprehensive and robust team that are all available to the commission and the council as we move ahead through this process. So just to begin, I wanted to share with the commission how this project came about, what is the reason why we're here tonight, and what led us to this point. Essentially, how this project started really to develop a plan for the East Side really was a council initiative. This came out of the council's strategic planning objectives, which was to prepare a plan to address the changes in development patterns and the influx of jobs that we were beginning to see as a result of one catalytic project, and then also a series of subsequent projects that were submitted to the city in this particular area of San Carlos. So we began to see that, you know, there's definitely significant change occurring in the area, and this is really coming about through new uses such as biotechnology and life sciences. And with that additional office development, it was very clear to staff from the city council that they want us to work on a plan so that we can maximize this city's ability to address certain aspects of this area, really began to shape these projects in a way that can add value to the city in areas such as infrastructure, transportation, circulation, community facilities, also looking at community benefits, because a lot of these projects proposed were asking for approval of what is called a planned development plan. And that's going beyond the scope of zoning standards that are in place. So when a project is requesting to do that and come up with something outside of this regular scope of our zoning standards, they need approval by the city council. So in this particular case, through those planned development plans, there's an opportunity to look at community benefits and what those might look like, and look at the land use mix in the area. So, so that is sort of what gave rise to this particular plan. And this slide here is just showing the commission a representation of the variety of projects that have been, or the geographic distribution of projects, and variety, I should say, of projects that have been proposed and approved. Of course, the big one that we know about is the eight twenty five to eight thirty five industrial project. Hopefully, you can see my mouse on the screen. That is almost near completion. Some temporary certificates of occupancy have been issued. And then more recently, the seven 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 industrial was approved. Another one had been approved in several years past at nine thirty Britain. We have an application on file for ten thirty Britain. And then the project at ten ninety one industrial was already approved, and I think they received their building permit issuance. So there's about ten projects here in total. And then, of course, the biggest one that really, I think, pushed this vision plan into into development, I would say, is the proposal by Alexandria. So this is, as you can see in the yellow dotted line, a very significant piece of the overall this concentration of development that is occurring in this part of our city. And as you might remember, we have a scoping meeting coming up this Monday, July nineteenth, so that we can hear from the commission and the community about what they would like the consultants to look at as the environmental impact report is prepared for this project. And so this is just sort of a, just a kind of a big picture look at all of the reasons why a vision plan idea for this area was born. The overall square footage from the projects as they are currently proposed and has, as have, some of them have already been approved. The total gross footage of that is just under three million square feet. However, we are subtracting the square footage that was preexisting, right? Because there were developments and buildings there prior to. So with that deduction, we're at just under two million square feet with a net new square footage identified there below. So again, moving into the project study area and its purpose. This slide here shows the proposed study area or the study area boundary. So everything that we just saw in the, in the aerial image above has now been sort of roped together under a study area, which is shown here on this slide as the area outlined in the red dotted line there you can see. So basically, it extends, it's industrial, but it extends across Holly and captures the in and outside and the storage facility behind it. And then it goes all the way along Industrial Road, captures all the parcels as they are adjacent to Highway one oh one, the southern boundary being Britain, and then going north along Old County Road to the edge of the parcels that front on Terminal Way. So we see this, the area that we're capturing is just the industrial and GCI, General Commercial Industrial Zone land, that's located in this area. So what is the purpose of this plan? Well, the plan is really to establish, you know, a long-term vision for the area and to give some guiding principles and direction to the city of San Carlos and its decision makers so that they can look at, you know, the vision plan in conjunction with development applications that are being submitted and being able to give some direction. The direction that they can give will be based upon a holistic and comprehensive review of the area so that we don't have to look at each particular project on a case-by-case basis. We can really look at the area as a whole and give some confidence to decision makers about what the community desires and what the overall intended look and feel and ideal for this area would be. The timeline for this plan was by design intended to be rather short. Because of all the development applications in play, the city knew it needed to move quick. And so we came up with the idea to create what is called the vision plan, rather than take something, a planning process, a document that could take at least a year or more to complete. So with a contract executed at the end of twenty twenty and beginning in January of this year, we are set to adopt the vision plan by the end of September this year. So as you can see here on the screen, we started with initiating the project and having a lot of stakeholder meetings, which I'll talk about in just a moment. At the beginning of the year, we had our first workshop in March. We had a second one in June. And now we're at the time where we're starting to meet with city commissions and have study sessions and things that are needed prior to going into the formal public review process, which will be in the month of September. So from now and all through August, this is what we will be doing to inform the community, to inform our decision makers about this plan and how it is being completed and proposed for everyone to consider. And hopefully, we'll get to those, well, we are planning on getting to the hearings in September, so hopefully we'll be able to complete it by then. But if we need to go a little bit longer, if the commission or council needs a little bit more time with this, then we're prepared to do that. So the approach for the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan, because of the life sciences and biotechnology background, we started to really kind of take a look at this area as, you know, an innovation district. Certainly, this area of our city has a rich history of being innovative. There are a lot of businesses and kind of a technological background, and a lot of it is talked about in the city's general plan, but there is a history there. But this history now, circa now in twenty twenty one, is now evolving into more life sciences and biotechnology focus, at least in terms of scale. As you can, you remember the previous slide before, a lot of that area is being used or being proposed for life sciences purposes while we still have the original kind of main components of the industrial base that's currently alive and doing well as of today. So as we begin to look at the innovation district and the study area, we made sure, made sure to take a broader look out to really kind of get a sense of what's going on in the area in some of the, in the context that we find ourselves in. Of course, you know, there's the Redwood Shores, there's the San Carlos Airport. We have a single-family neighborhood that's right adjacent to all of these developments. We're in close proximity of the downtown. And there's the Caltrain, San Carlos Caltrain Station that is within easy walking distance of this new district area. There is a, an amenity, a potential amenity for restoration of the Pulgas Creek. And there's also the city's Industrial Arts District that continues to do very well and has established a place, a place for itself within our city. So we wanted to make sure that we looked at the context, and that is something that our consultants rather leaned in on right away in terms of how we, how we are positioned and what this could mean for this district as a whole. In addition to that approach, we, and in terms of looking at innovation districts, we realized that innovation districts really, as we look at them around the area, including Mission Bay to the north, these are places for public life. This is not just, innovation districts are not just a place for, you know, a nine-to-five job and then it's empty. You know, that we discovered that this could really be a place, not just for the future employees of the area, but for the larger community as a whole, as a place for everyone. We recognize that it needs to be a place, innovation districts are multimodal, multimodal oriented, meaning there's many modes of travel so that the streets aren't just for cars, but there's a lot of ways to get around and about within and throughout the district and outside of the district using multiple modes of travel. That, and that also that it should be a complete community. And so what that means, that this is not just a collection of buildings, but this is a larger vision for the, for the area where these buildings can contribute towards achieving something that is shared by the community as a whole. You know, whether that be a community benefit for a community center, for open space networks, that these can be woven together in a way and each development does its part in making this vision come to realization. And then lastly, a key component of this is that the area could be inspired to be a resilient district, given that we just are almost wrapping up our climate, condition, and adaptation plan and the themes around sustainable development and because of the new building codes that have recently been adopted, what can we do to really make this be resilient and sustainable now and going into the future? So these are the four sort of themes and approach we took as we sort of kind of started to delve into the existing conditions of the area. So again, just really just wanting to show how we wanted to capitalize on creating a holistic vision for this area, looking at the fifteen-minute walk shed that is, that presents itself as a result of the location of our downtown and fifteen minutes from the, from the San Carlos Caltrain Station, you know, what areas that could encompass and how that can be leveraged going forward. The existing conditions also helped us identify some of the greatest challenges that we see in this area. We recognize that, you know, there's just two connections to Caltrain and downtown. We recognize that, you know, there's an existing single-family neighborhood there, and the transitions between what occurs on the industrial side as it leads over into residential uses are really important. We recognize there's a history of contaminated soils in the area, that the character of Industrial Road is beginning to transform itself by recent new development. We recognize that there's a lack of safe sidewalks and bike facilities in the area. In many cases, the sidewalks are lacking. There's many gaps in the sidewalks, and the sidewalks are certainly not wide enough to accommodate a safe and robust pedestrian circulation network. And finally, we recognize that the environmental quality of Pulgas Creek is an issue and presents, you know, definitely a challenge. But with those challenges in the existing conditions analysis, we recognize there are opportunities. Likewise, even though there's just two connections to downtown and Caltrain, we can really look at those connections and see what we can do to bolster those. There are projects, you know, where developers are assembling parcels, and together those large block developments can really contribute something meaningful to the area. There are some city-owned parcels that could potentially, you know, from a long-term perspective, be an amenity that the city could realize at some point in the future. There's the old rail spurs that kind of give somewhat of the bones or the framework to the area. And likewise, Pulgas Creek, it's a challenge, but it's also an opportunity. And there's also recognition that, you know, there's a certain area, you know, the juxtaposition of single-family neighborhoods to industrial really creates an opportunity to look at that as a transition zone and what it could become potentially in the future. As part of this existing conditions analysis, we also did a kind of a scan of the businesses, all of the businesses that are in the study area and the types of businesses that are there today. Everything ranging from types of businesses that are really heavy industrial and automotive oriented to commercial and professional usages. And certainly, there's a good amount already of some lab and life sciences, medical research, some storage facilities, and a lot of trade support. So this just kind of is intended to show the commission that there really is what we like to call, and our consultants have called, a rich ecosystem of different types of businesses in this area. And also that, you know, the east side of San Carlos, we really wanted to point out that it is a significant contributor to sales tax revenues in the city. If you look at the graph and also the table shown on this slide. The entire east side represents, you know, eighty four, eighty five percent of the sales tax revenue coming into the city. So in terms of the study area that we're looking at, we're not starting from scratch. This is already very much an area of industry that is alive and functioning very, very well within our city. So some of the outcomes and deliverables we have achieved to date. And these have been included in the commission packet is an, as some analysis on the existing. Infrastructure, which includes, you know, an overview of the utilities serving the area, area, you know, su- suitability and constraints. We also have prepared a market scan study. And district case studies. And the market scan really looks at scanning our local region. In terms of what other centers of life sciences and biotechnology exist. We looked at, you know, areas that are already here such as Redwood Shores and we also looked at Mission Bay. Which is obviously one of the very new and very large life sciences oriented areas in our region. And essentially what we found is that, you know, there's, there's really, and. Let me just back up a bit, but in addition to the market scan, we also did. Look a lot wider, we cast wider net across the country and tried to find areas. That were similar to San Carlos and we came across a couple of areas that served as case studies where we might learn from. And certainly uncovered the stories about those areas and what it took. To get those areas realized and we found that there was no other area that we've been able to identify that's quite like San Carlos. San Carlos's east side again is not an area that's starting from scratch, there's already a there, there to it. But it is an area that, as we can see, is an area for potential tremendous change. And we want to be able to get in front of that. So these case studies help to inspire us and give us some ideas and so these serve as informational documents that we can use along the way. We also have reached out to another consultant who prepared a community benefits research paper. This is something that was prepared before, but it's certainly a timely opportunity to be able to bring this into the mix of resource documents that we can take a look at. And basically, the community benefits research paper provides some lessons learned. And we can certainly look at that as, as guidance, as background information as we work on community benefits. A framework for community benefits as part of this vision plan. So as I mentioned before, we had a couple of workshops, so those have been completed and a lot of the recording, all of the recordings are available on the project website. Which is sancarlosinnovation.org. We do have summary report for the first workshop and the second summary report. Is coming soon for the June ninth workshop and all of these are available on the link below. And once we get that second summary report completed, we'll be passing that on to the planning commission. Now, in terms of civic engagement, and certainly this is a big component of the work in preparing any vision plan or a part of any planned up. Planning endeavor is to really reach out to our constituents and stakeholders and the community at large and hear from them. So in order to inform and work with the community. This slide here represents just a couple, just basically represents a comprehensive overview of what we have done. So as the project was kicked off, we issued a spotlight newsletter, which was released in February earlier this year. To announce the project, describe how long it was going to take and how to get involved. Including announcement of the new project website for this project, again, sancarlosinnovation.org. So these first two items were completed at the same time and really kind of launched in tandem. And then the, and then the next thing that we embarked on right at the outset was identifying, reaching out and meeting with project area stakeholders. So these are stakeholders located within the study area, we wanted to reach out to all of the business owners in the study area. The property owners in the study area. And of course, the developers who have submitted projects or concept plans within the study area and talk to them as well. We also felt that it was really important to engage and hear from the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Leadership Group. The G E S C, although they are not in the study area, they are right adjacent to it and they're would be affected by any significant changes or, or ideas or, or plans. That would be proposed and we certainly want to hear from them about that and get their ideas and, and their concerns about the area and. And what we should be mindful of as, as we go forward and, and look at the review of these projects. So we sent out a postcard to every address in the study area, asking them to participate in these stakeholder meetings. And I will share that the stakeholder meetings have really been run by our consultants at Perkins and Will Planning Staff. Has not been engaged with them and this is really intentional so that all of the business owners and property owners and developers and. And leadership from the G E S C can have, you know, you know, just a candid conversation. With the consultants without having staff there, so that we felt that was really important to kind of step away. And let our consultants really engage and kind of have a conversation with these stakeholders. And so we've been having several meetings with these along the way and we plan to have a couple more as we go forward. Also, part of the engagement strategy was by design was getting involvement by the city councils Economic Development Subcommittee. So the two members of the council that are on that subcommittee right now are Mayor Laura Palmer Lohan. And Vice Mayor Sarah McDowell. And they really serve as a sounding board for us as we are, you know, uncover, you know, the input, the strategies for the public workshops. The information coming forward, they're really there to kind of, you know, meet with along the way so we can, so we can make sure that they are informed. And, and that we're, that we're making progress on this project in meeting those expectations. And then lastly, we had two community wide workshops that I mentioned before. At the first workshop, we provided the community with an overview of the existing conditions. And started to break the area down to pieces that, you know, we can have a conversation with them about. And the three themes that we had conversations with the community about were circulation, open space and a mix of uses. And then at the second workshop, we began to identify some of the key topics and the ten. And a big proposed planning strategies and really wanted to hear feedback from the community on that. So, so this is the progress that we've made and the community outreach that we have done for this project so far. And so without saying, there's been a lot of comment, we have all of the chat transcript, a lot of reports. And data concerning the input they would receive, but to sort of boil it all down. This slide here just provides a represent, representation of what we heard. You know, and from the community. In those three main categories. So there was definitely concerns and desires to see more green, greenery and open space in the area. Definitely desire by the community to look at Pulgas Creek. And think about what we can do to restore that and make it an amenity within the district and really have it serve. As a place where people can come and walk along and gather and kind of be a nice green, open space, kind of a met focal point and amenity. There was definitely a desire that the development taking place should incorporate green development practices. A desire mentioned many, many times to remake, remediate the contamination in the area. And to integrate, you know, native and drought tolerant plants in the area. There was also in terms of mix of uses, there was definitely voices that were expressed about protecting the industrial, the existing businesses that were already there. And thriving and doing well. But also a desire to how, how could, how might we be able to incorporate some neighborhood serving retail? And get some community benefits such as, you know, a community facility and get some daycare possibly in the area as a community benefit. Housing did come up in terms of, you know, with recognition with all of these developments taking place, what are we doing about housing? And we did inform the community that we are working on a focused general plan update, housing element update. So folks were informed about that and understood there, this is a conversation that's happening on a parallel track. But we did want to mention that, you know, there was certainly that conversation that was brought up at the workshops. And like I mentioned before, that this was not a surprise and we expected that, you know, the community is, the G E S C wanted better transitions between the industrial. And the residential uses. And just overall that there really should be a support for mixing businesses at different scales and making sure that small flexible spaces were available. For startups and to really kind of keep that component, you know, as part of supporting that in the vision plan going forward. And then in terms of traffic and circulation, definitely we're hearing from the Greater East San Carlos that we, they want to minimize vehicle traffic. Going through their streets, making sure that it didn't circulate through their neighborhood. Also hearing about how we can, might leverage old, the old railroad spurs and kind of have that be a new network of connectivity. You know, kind of capitalizing on, you know, a multi mobility aspect of that. And improve freight circulation throughout the district, recognizing that there's a lot of traffic. From trucks that are doing business and there needs to be a place for that to continue. And then finally, last but certainly not least is that the area really be developed into a safe multimodal street, streets for people. And we, and that we're really promoting walking and biking. So out of that input, in working with the consultants, ten big ideas began to emerge. And we started to put this together. And you're, you're the first group that's sort of seeing it in this particular context in terms, in terms of this list here on the screen tonight. So the ten big moves, restore Pulgas Creek. Create a green boulevard along industrial road. Create a community open space network throughout the district. And really be supportive of the district subareas. And I'll talk about those a little bit more. And that we prioritize activity hubs. And again, this kind of goes back to the idea of a vision, innovation district being a place for people, a place for people. Places where people might gather and that there'd be some open space amenities and community facilities that can really. Serve as active, activity hubs and get those areas activated as places for people gather and enjoy. We also coming to the surface to, is to look at ways to really foster an inclusive business environment. And this really has to do with the, the rich ecosystem of businesses that are already there. That are probably, that are not part of that, you know, kind of big transformational picture that we've seen. From development projects being proposed, but that, that are really there and so how can we foster this and support those businesses? Number seven, invest in streets for people. And again, this gets back to the multi mobility aspect that we, that is desired for this area. And then how we do that and it could be creating a transportation and management agency to assist us with all of these efforts as we look at parking and circulation and traffic. And the potential for shuttles over the long term of, of the lifetime of these projects coming online. And look at ways in which we can adopt a parking, a district parking strategy. And then lastly, integrating recycled water system, this is something that came up from the community. And there was mention of the purple pipes and how, and this is something that we should be looking at as part of the resilient district theme that we talked about. So as we jump into these, I think I just want to pause, I know I'm talking for a bit, but I have ten more slides. To go through and then I think we can start. But certainly I should have mentioned that if there's anything that comes up along the way, feel free to kind of just jump in. Let's start first with this concept of green streets. Sort of emerging as a big theme for the area. And again, this is really about greening the district as a whole. And incorporating green infrastructure into the streets so that the streets not only serve as places, safe places for cars and bikes pedestrians. And streets for people, but can also accomplish at the same time. Some green infrastructure, including making sure that we have increased stormwater management capacity. Looking at industrial road is kind of like a green boulevard. Getting more trees planted, while there are some trees there, you know, maybe they're not the best trees to really provide the beautiful and aesthetic tree canopy. That enhances the pedestrian experiences. And then looking at ways that we can incorporate landscaping that can actually, you know, even serve as a new habitat area, especially along the Pulgas Creek. And can landscape also can help provide buffer, a buffer, a much needed buffer for people as they're walking throughout the district from the vehicles taking place. And the images on the screen below are just to kind of really sort of visual, help mission visualize these concepts. And then kind of, you know, you know, segue, a segue from the green streets is, is really kind of an open space network for the community. And what that may look like in terms of sort of a network that kind of goes across the district as a whole. You know, we took, we took a look at what's already there. Certainly the L'Oréal Park and knowing that the school district owns a site just adjacent to L'Oréal. And looking at, you know, a natural network of open spaces that could segue from that into the district. Recognize the potential opportunity of the court, courtyard, again, this is a vision plan, it's not something. That's set in stone, but we certainly didn't want to miss any potential opportunity that was and at least recognize. What's the potential, potentialities are. So this really kind of just shows that as it transverses across the screen here, kind of capitalizing on those railroads first. And then certainly moving all the way out of the study area. Entering into the proposed Alexandria site, who is incorporating an open space in their site program. And then, of course, how that interacts with the Pulgas Creek. So Pulgas Creek Restoration, we talked about this, but just kind of honing in a little deeper on this particular topic. And the idea of this is to really reimagine Pulgas Creek as a vital community open space amenity in the district. Because of Alexandria project going in, there is a potential for larger setbacks. Along the creek, which would can really help restore and provide some public access. To a new, a new and improved creek area. Recognizing that the creek also can help mitigate in flooding, help increase habitat area. And serve as a, as a trail, like a public trail and see, and provides seating areas along the creek and can really serve as an opportunity for some. Public art and educational signage about the creek. On the screen below, these images show, you know, are from other cities that have basically looked at their creeks within their cities. And the ways that they've improved them, you know, with, with some, with some attention. The next area that we are, have noticed is the idea of these district subareas. And these are really areas that, you know, we, we see as areas that we can promote. And throughout the vision plan and really identifying their unique distinctiveness within the district. That they're a little different from each other and so this was really important to sort of highlight and identify. So the area shown kind of like a sage green in area number one. This is where a lot of the larger developments are taking place, of course, the largest being Alexandria. But this is where a lot of the catalytic projects have been proposed. And in subarea number two, this sort of felt a little bit separate than that area, it's kind of almost serving as a gateway. And is really anchored today, as you enter the district by the hotel. There is another hotel proposed right at the intersection of Holly and Industrial as well. So, and then there's a lot of smaller parcels, a little bit of unique businesses occurring here already, but that kind of, kind of gave rise to its own unique distinctive character. And then kind of right in the middle of the, the district as a whole is kind of like what we see as the core. These are medium sized parcels, there's a variety of different, you know, industrial type of uses. There's no big projects proposed in this area today. But it really was different from the lot, the, the larger parcels that you see kind of occupying the area of sub, of the subarea number one. And then last but not least is subarea number four, which we really looked at as kind of like a transitional sort of zone or area. And, and also recognizing that the parcels in this area are the smallest that we find in the district overall. There's, they're very small, it's a fine grain system of businesses that are really specializing in the trade skills. There's they're very small, it's a fine grain system of businesses that are really specializing in the trade skills in this area that are closest to caltrain and of course were adjacent to residential. So this is a kind of like an underlying foundation that we wanted to identify, that we identified and brought forward and will recognize as the structure of the plan unfolds. The next area that we identified as a big move or a planning strategy is really about activation of the district through places for people. And we are referring to these as activity hubs. We see an activity hub already where the existing hotel is located. An activity hub that could leverage off of the connection off of the Royal Underpass shown here. And in this labeled number four. And then, of course, we have the industrial road activity hub with the new development that has occurred. You know, previously from this Murray in twenty five, but it's now been acquired by Alexandria. And all the improvements that are being made there. And looking at, you know, the potential for an activity hub in the community open space that is proposed by Alexandria. And then certainly not leaving off the table a potential for another activity hub, whether is a corp yard, the corp yard is relocated at some point in the future, or perhaps it's redeveloped. And with more efficient use of the land, it's layer that's there now. And look at ways that some sort of activities or places for people can start to emerge. So of course, this is a rough sketch, but this is sort of what surfaced up at the top. And so this is an idea to really include in our plan that it's a place for people and we can really serve to act and we can look at activating these places long beyond, you know, just the traditional ninety five work hours presently there. So moving on to streets, I talked about multimodal. So everything from car, pedestrian, bicycle, scooter, and all of the other types of modalities that we're starting to see. You know, circa now and in 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 twenty twenty one and going forward. The theme going forward with multi-mobility is really that it needs to be safe. It needs to be delightful, it needs to be aesthetic and it needs to feel comfortable to really serve and and meet its its true purpose of making this a place that's comfortable for to both walk and bike within and throughout the district. We really want to capitalize on the existing and recently adopted pedestrian and bicycle master plan. And looking at ways that we can enhance the pedestrian facilities on these public streets going forward. And really start to promote the connections within the district to the surrounding local destinations. So the streets that are identified here would really serve as kind of the foundation and kind of like the bones of the the primary streets that would serve in this multimodal capacity. And then moving into this idea of kind of like a the the next tier down, if you will, of a circulation network of transitional streets that could even be shared amongst users. So this idea, the transitional shared streets are streets that have slow speed by design to make sure that the street environment provides, you know, safety for pedestrians, even with some freight and truck deliveries in place. That the edge of the street really be leveraged for improved on-street parking and vehicle loading and landscaping. And looking at the idea of what has been referred to as flexible curb zones and parking management. So as you can see here on some of the images below, there's on the lower left, there's this, you know, kind of visual of a curbless street. Which can really, you know, provide space for pedestrians and also provide space when needed for delivery trucks and to keep, you know, the general activities of those business operations functioning in a way that they need to. And that it accommodates, you know, freight and loading and that the frontages really be activated in this area. So they're they serve as sort of a second tier. And again, carrying forward that theme is a place for for people rather than just cars. We're also looking at ways in which we can sort of, you know, break down the size of these large blocks, especially in the southern portion of the district that we see in these areas into into block into more, you know, what we refer to as walkable dimensions. So what's shown here in the blue dotted line is this idea for non-vehicular connectivity. So these could be places for pedestrian, for bikes, for everything but a car. So that you can have some micro mobility, if you will, occurring throughout the district without the need to get on some of the larger streets. So the image shown at the bottom of the screen here kind of convey the idea of, you know, car-free routes that are routes for just pedestrians or cyclists. You know, that they're really designed and intended to be used for all ages and they're safe to do so. And they can even be located between buildings. So it's not necessarily something where you need an actual public right of way to accomplish, but it can't even be accomplished between. So in order to accommodate all of these types of transit and circulation enhancements, the idea of a transportation management agency was daylighted and discussed. And in in addition to that, what are some of the other things that kind of come into play as we think about enhancements that we can make to the transportation network? Some of the strategies can include expansion of existing transit stops. You know, what types of incentive programs could be developed? Looking at the potential for additional local transit service by Samtrans. And there's an effort underway right now to look at a new route that's being explored. And as well as looking at district-based shuttle service. But again, that would would probably likely need to be more of a long-term sort of shuttle for the district rather than each individual project of its own having a shuttle in order to work most efficiently. So the some of the themes that we recognize this is part of this circulation sort of intervention strategies, you know, that we've been exploring. And then finally, district parking. One of the things that we are coming to realize is that we need to ensure the right-sized parking to support the businesses in the area and still provide, you know, public access. So it's not too little parking. It's not too much. It's just the right size and this is important. So important that we right-size the parking so that we can be more successful in our multimodal goals. And so some of the potential strategies centered under this idea of district parking is looking at parking standards, you know, based upon transit proximity. Looking again at our transportation demand management program that we currently have, you know, in our zoning ordinance and how that might need to change in order to ensure we meet our multi-mobility goals. And then and then again, you know, this concept is not new, but you know, it's been established many places elsewhere. Is this idea of parking once? So you park once within the district and then you're able to walk to different destinations. So that's an idea that we've floated around in conversations. And also looking at minimizing, you know, surface parking lots. So all of these things together really kind of helps stitch together, you know, the look and feel of the district. Especially serving, you know, the desires to make it walkable, pedestrian friendly, and that it's really an interesting place to kind of navigate through. And then lastly, one of the things that will be part of the vision plan is this idea of community benefits. And how we get to figuring out what community benefits are most desired and most appropriate for the projects that are being proposed. So this here is just a preliminary menu. We are still working on refining this. This is something that will continue to be evolved. But we wanted to sort of daylight it here before you, let you know it's coming, that it's part of the vision plan to kind of give you a sense of how we started to look at. So these categories that we just talked about, open space, circulation, you know, infrastructure, activity hubs or activation programming, community facilities, economic development, affordable housing, neighborhood serving retail. All of the input that we started to capture from the community were sort of, you know, developed into these themes. And as we started to hear from the community about their input for things that they desire for the area. You know, that we captured that and it's shown here on the slide is everything that's sort of in this light blue or sky blue color. So everything that you see there came directly from community input. And then what's shown in the dark bold text are just some of the best practices that we could consider. Certainly, we have our consultants on board and so part of their job is to help us out and let us know what some of the best practices are. So we've included those on this on this table as well. And then some other examples that just sort of kind of made it that made it onto this list. Like in terms of activation programming, our arts and cultural uses in terms of economic development, looking at ways to really support the small businesses through network opportunities. Workforce development, you know, local construction procurement. And we've even added a couple of things under affordable housing, such as workforce housing, senior housing and supportive housing. So this is a broad brush of community benefits that we can look at. And the ways that we're thinking about community benefits that we're still evolving, that's still under development right now. Is that benefits can be something that's provided onsite by a developer. Or it can be something that is provided within the study area or the district. Or it could be something that goes to the city, to a city fund, and it's incorporated, you know, towards citywide goals and programs. So there's a lot of different ways that we can start to break this down, but what was important to share is sort of, you know, what the community's desires are and that we're starting to think about, you know, what a framework of community benefits would look like. So as these projects go through the entitlement process, there's a comprehensive wide range of of ideals to consider and then what's most appropriate based on a project by project, on a project by project basis. So the next steps again tonight is informational informational. It's an opportunity to learn, it's an opportunity for the commission to ask questions. And because this is an agendized item, I just also wanted to remind the commission that we want to hear from the public as well. So our next steps after tonight, we'll be diving into this again on August twenty fifth. And on August twenty fifth is really where we want to hear from the commission in terms of any direction or your feedback that we can take forward as a vision plan is developed and share with the city council at their study session. So I just wanted to, you know, share with the commission that there's no pressure to give us any feedback or excuse me, any direction at this time, although if the commission is ready to do so, certainly you can start to share some of your thoughts or ideas, but what we're really looking for is kind of a a group consensus consensus on August twenty fifth. So after we have the August twenty fifth study session, we'll move ahead towards a study session with the city council. That brings us to September. And then during the rest of the month of September, we're hoping to get back to the planning commission with a formal public hearing where we will be looking for the commission's recommendation on the vision plan that we can take forward to the city council. And then the city council would be considering the planning commission's recommendation. You know, hearing from the public and looking at, you know, consideration of vision plan adoption. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to go back to any slides that you like. And I will be sharing the slide deck with the commission after tonight's meeting, so you can have that readily on hand. Again, both myself and Alice today are here. If you have any questions, as is our consultant lead, Giddy Sawal and Annie Ryan from Perkins and Will. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Lisa. Let's let's first see if there are questions from the planning commissioners and then open it up for the public comment. So hello, planning commissioners, do you have questions?
I don't have a question right now, but I I have excellent presentation, Lisa. And a good job in the report so far, Perkins and Will and the other consultants, very impressive. Thank you.
Well, I can toss out one question, which is the impact of this development on housing. To get a better feel for that, do we have a a long-term estimate of the number of jobs that would be net new jobs that would be created? And how that might, you can understand the impact on the jobs versus housing ratio?
I can start to answer that question and I just wanted to, through the chair, like, know that I see Kristen and Ellen's hands up as well. But I will answer your question concerning that. And certainly this is something that, you know, we've been getting questions on and and will be prepared to talk about more as we go along. Where where we're beginning right now are sort of, you know, the first place that we look at in terms of anticipated job growth within the city of San Carlos on a long-term basis is with our current general plan. So our general plan was adopted in the year two thousand nine and it goes through the year twenty thirty. And here we are, twenty twenty one. So I can provide these numbers to the commission, but essentially the total number of jobs anticipated over the life of the general plan were an additional nine thousand one hundred and sixty-five jobs to the year twenty thirty. We're in the process right now of doing, getting some analysis done on the number of jobs anticipated by each project, you know, of course, the projects that we know that are coming today. And of course, by the time, you know, they get built and fully operated and fully occupied, we could very well be right at the twenty thirty mark or somewhere, but you know, each project has its own timing and phasing, of course. But in terms of the number of jobs for each development, we're working on that. But I will, I wanted to share with the commission that since the general plan, it was an additional nine thousand one hundred and sixty-five jobs. And if we look at the overall square pitch for industrial, since the just just industrial space, industrial growth, it was over two million square feet. And then with office, it was over half a million, just over half a million square footage of office. And then commercial, about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand additional square feet. So there was a lot of growth anticipated to occur over the life of the general plan. So now we'll just be kind of stitching in where we're at in terms of, you know, how close we are in terms of, you know, meeting, you know, what we projected. The scene of our projections and forecasts were actually on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Alice today, Community Development Director. And I was just gonna ask, since you asked about jobs, housing balance. I wanted to ask Lisa if you have the number of projected housing units in the general plan as well.
Yes, I do. The number of additional units was one thousand four hundred and thirty-six.
New housing units, right?
New, yeah, this would be net new.
Then in in the eight-year cycle or for twenty thirty?
That that was that, so this, so the number that we had at our last housing element, the the fifth year arena cycle, which was twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three, was five hundred and ninety-six units. Just to kind of put a reference point within the, you know, provide some context around the additional fourteen hundred, one thousand four hundred and thirty-six units. The last housing element was five hundred and ninety-six. And of course, going forward now, twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one is an additional two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two. So but I will say, and on on for all cities across the state, this number is much higher, which is why we're doing a focused general plan update. So we'll be factoring all of that in as part of the the EIR and the general plan update that will focus on land use housing and the safety element.
And Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, the reason that I wanted to have Lisa clarify your numbers is the idea of a jobs housing balance, you know, you can approach it from a lot of different angles. And right now, if we look at our numbers in terms of the jobs that we have today and the number of housing units we have today, we would say that we we have a balanced jobs housing number. And there are, you know, some numerics that we can look at in terms of, you know, what's what's a good average numeric in terms of Numeric in terms of jobs and housing in a community to say that you have a balance between those two things and. You know, there are numbers that are associated with that. And so the the second part of it would be. RENA, the Retail Housing Needs Assessment and ABA and MTC and the state has said. Based on the growth that we see in your community. Your jobs housing, you know, your fair share of that growth is 2,760 units. Between now and the next eight years. And some of that, of course, has to be affordable housing, certain percentages of it. So. You know, that that's sort of a couple of different approaches to look at it. And then there may be another approach and maybe, well. As a community, we we want to do better than what the state is telling us to do. And so there needs to be a closer number to the number of jobs, you know, than the RENA number. So there's all kinds of different approaches to that to that question. But outline a few of those ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Kristen, Commissioner Clemens, do you have a question?
Thank you. And thank you, Al and Lisa, for that additional information. I was. Going to start off with a question about that. I was wondering. And Al's point about different ways to measure the jobs housing balance. The one I frequently seen is a jobs to employed residents ratio. So I don't know if you know San Carlos's current jobs to employed residents ratio.
Yes, we have the number, but I'm not going to say it off the top of my head because I don't know the exact number, but. But we're looking at it recently and making the determining or understanding that we're right there in terms of like. What you would consider a, you know, almost a perfect balance.
Thank you. And I know a lot of communities are slightly under one and many are, you know, just slightly over one. There are one or two that are. Crazy like 3.0, but but I'm glad to hear that we're on the bounce. So. Look forward to the updates. I had just a couple of informational questions. I guess three really quick ones. When you say strategy six is fostering an inclusive business environment. When you say inclusive, do you mean including businesses that are not physically in that area? But are located elsewhere? And and what is that? What does that look like? Or do you mean something else about being inclusive from the business perspective?
I would like to have our consultant, either Gidi or Annie, respond to this one.
Absolutely, Lisa. I'll jump in. Good evening, commercial members. When we say inclusive here in the business environment, we really mean that let's. Not forget the fact that there are thriving businesses right now. How do we continue to enable their success while we kind of welcome the new businesses? So what's the synergy and what's the fine line we need to walk so that we don't gentrify and push the businesses that are. Currently there to operate.
Thank you for that. And I know that rapidly rising commercial rents was a has been a great concern. To existing businesses and members of the EDEC when I was on the EDEC. So thanks for that. I think that's something we need to focus on as we do continue to develop. That we don't just drive out all kind of, you know, businesses that can offer moderately priced goods and services. You know, we already drove out the pizza by the slice place that all of the teens used to go to, right? Because the profit margins weren't high enough. So anyway, I appreciate your perspective on that. Two other questions. And we're talking about district parking. And I'm glad to see this proposal here and I my understanding is that it's very progressive and I want to say I'm very impressed by all of the work. And all of the, you know, best practices, information that's being brought to this exercise and to these thoughts. You know, again, I'm very impressed by San Carlos as a small community and the caliber of of work and people. You know, staff here, but obviously consulting assistance too. And the seriousness with which we're taking, planning for this, you know, big big development that we're facing. I'm I'm very impressed and I'm very happy to be even slightly associated with that. So thank you for the good work. So district parking, my understanding best practice, definitely to plan kind of holistically and then to have developments. You know, think access the district parking. Are there private garages that we would be looking at or does the city own garage space? That is also part of that discussion or what would that, what does that consist of? Do we know yet?
I couldn't jump in, Lisa. Yeah, I think we we have to kind of really settle on exactly how we want to define. Parking district, we clearly want to right size this place. There needs to be. And we need to address some of the zoning regulations where we are not forcing developers to provide parking when they don't see the market need for it. But at the same time, we don't want to underpark it and create a chaos. So. We want to be thoughtful about it and how we can look at sharing the resources and making sure that. There isn't under utilization of parking and if there's an opportunity in the daytime and the nighttime use versus weekend and weekday use. What might be that right kind of formula or kind of configuration of parking? We want to be thoughtful about it. Madam Commission, we haven't arrived at an exact solution for this. Every different district has a different approach to it, but being creative about it. And working with the developers and stakeholders really figure out what might be the right approach. We want to make sure that it's right sized for the San Carlos.
I think that's really, really smart because I know how hard it is to come up with financing for garages. And how expensive they can be. So I I I think that's just being really progressive and and smart about all of this. So thanks for that. And then I had a couple of questions about the public benefit slide, Lisa, if you wouldn't mind going back. To that slide about definitions and how you're thinking about. For instance, workforce housing, do you have a definition for that and mixed income housing? On the lower right. Thanks.
Let me see, Annie or Giti, can you take this one as well? I mean, this this, I think this might be. Certainly, I I think we're still exploring this in terms of how. This would exactly fit into this equation, but we're, I think we're, well, we're we're speaking about it on a kind of like a broad brush kind of. But let me see if I can have Gidi or Annie.
Sure. I I think, again, we don't have an exact definition as yet, but this being a vision plan, we want to acknowledge that. The community that we enable over here in this district. Really does allow for all income groups to be able to be housed, whether it's. Here in on the site itself, or it allows for some funds so that in the city kind of context. There is you, we are enabling the mix of incomes and multi generational and all kinds of housing typologies to be delivered to. Here to really formulate our complete response here, but making sure that we are enabling a complete community for San Carlos.
Right. So it's the it's the broad range of income levels that we that that means to represent, right?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. I know people use workforce housing in different ways and, you know. Basically, everybody who affords an apartment has to have a job. And so that's that's. And yet some people use it for kind of middle income housing as well and they. Using it as kind of a broader term, along with others, with other cohorts there. Thanks. And then I had on one more question and I I really, of course, really am excited by this community benefits conversation. And really liked so many things about the plan, but you know, this is a questions period. So that's fine. We can give feedback another time. But I wanted to just ask a little bit more about broadband infrastructure. And whether that means to be public access, whether that is, you know, for the district or whether that is. Outside the district as well. And then broadband, you know, breaks down into the. The infrastructure and then the services too. So what was the thought here?
This definitely is a longer, more exhaustive wish list over here. So. Making sure that city as it moves forward has at least a cheat sheet of possibilities in this district. That can really serve the businesses and the community is how we kind of thinking about it. You're asking all the right questions. We don't necessarily have exact kind of definition of how we want to think about it, but absolutely. If this is an innovation ecosystem, how do we enable? That environment, which kind of really makes it attractive for businesses to want to locate here and is able to really. Make make this competitive in terms of other city places. I I do feel that we do feel that we want to list all of that and. For consideration and how you enable that and what's exactly the range. I think is yet to be really determined as a as a framework.
Right. Yeah, I think broadband access is critical for place making. And, you know, for the attractiveness of the spaces themselves, but it's also, you know. As we've noted here, critical infrastructure for the community too. And for everything that everyone does day to day in the community. So I like that it, we can think about it in different ways. And, you know, a lot of really good ideas on this, on this slide and throughout. So with that, I will, I will cede my time. To Commissioner Garvey.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for that excellent presentation. I really appreciated all the work that went into that. I also appreciated the binder that was sent out to the commission ahead of time. That was really well put together and I was able to attend the very first workshop. And I was so impressed with that workshop and all of our fellow San Carlsans who attended. I would say 100% of the comments and suggestions that were given at that workshop were thoughtful and useful. And I had made quite a few notes from that workshop, not realizing that all of the chats would be memorialized. And I was really pleased to see that so many of those suggestions have made it into this document and into the presentation. So. Some to incorporate all of those comments in in a really usable and and thoughtful document, I appreciated the way that was done. And then turning it into the, I think they're called the 10 big moves. The one move I wanted to comment on, I think, was the non non vehicle connections. And this builds a little bit on what Vice Chair Clemens was saying about parking. I liked that the plan is taking advantage of this whole area and thinking about. Transportation holistically and not in a piecemeal fashion, as is so often done, which which leads to parking. That is not thoroughly thought through for the whole region. And what I particularly liked about this element was that the new biking and walking connections. Break down the blocks, there's the slide, into more walkable sizes. I really appreciated that. It's it's always been really important for me for people to take public transportation to work. And we have a train station in the middle of our downtown. And people might take the train to their work if they worked in this new innovation district. If they didn't have an interesting street to walk to to work. But if there are bike paths and interesting walking paths and there's a holistic plan. Of being able to walk in between buildings, so you can kind of cut through to get to your particular building faster. That in my mind means that even more people will want to take the train to their work in San Carlos. And and for me, that's really important. So of all the big moves element, this non vehicle connections for me was. Really important and I'm glad it's a big move and I'm glad you're thinking about it holistically. We have the opportunity to do that, not only as Vice Chair Clement said, with right sizing the parking and sharing the parking. But in making sure everybody that takes the train can can walk down a tree lined street and maybe walk in between buildings. To get to their place of work. So I just wanted to comment on that. I I really appreciated that. And the second and final comment I had was on the development agreements. I appreciated the the community benefits research paper. I don't know a lot about community benefits agreements. And one of the things that was special and important for me was to see the. Examples of affordable housing elements that are in other agreements. I think there was an agreement. In San Francisco and I think there was an agreement in in Redwood City that had an element of affordable housing and I thought. That I really appreciated that you included that because at some point in the future, San Carlos might want to have something similar. And it's helpful for me as a member of this commission to just see what what some of our neighboring cities have done. So. Thank you for that. Yeah, good job all around.
Thank you. Commissioner Yakapony, you have a question?
Yes, thank you and good evening to everyone. And I would echo the the presentation was excellent. Thank you, Lisa. And I'm sure I know you had Lisa Costa Sanders and Al's great input as well. And I think what I I echo Commissioner Garvey's point, I. Also was able to join the workshops and I really appreciated the listening. That the team at Perkins and Will and Citi did to our citizens and bringing their. Their wish list, their priorities into the the plan as it's or or the ideas that have been brought forward thus far are really great. So thank you very much for doing that. I had a maybe these are more process of questions that. My colleagues haven't touched on, but I I think the first one would be in in this area of. This idea of a development area, and I think the white paper talked about two different. Approaches that cities have used and the pros and cons of each. And I think they were tied with formulaic and negotiation based. In our process going forward, who chooses them? Is that the purview of city council? Who gets to pick?
I'm I'm going to defer this one to Al. Al, if you're you're there. I think this one would be best answered by Al. Oh, great. Thank you, Al.
Could you rephrase that question, please?
Yeah, sure, Al. The the a couple of approaches to negotiating. Community benefits and the the way. The development areas are brought together over the life of a project, five years, eight years, 10 years. We're we're framed in a couple of ways. One, each project negotiated one at a time. The other is just set a set of rules. And it seems important for San Carlos because this. Well, I'm I'm not sure. I'd be interested in your thoughts of whether this will all come together at once or over time. But my question is, who gets to pick the approach? Is this a city council? Is this a city staff?
Well. You know, we're we're approaching that idea with this package of information essentially. So. I think what you'll see later on is we're we're talking about that on a staff level. We're talking to our consultants about. You know, what do other cities do? And, you know, there's different approaches. Who gets to decide it? Ultimately, the city council does get to to decide. They have the final decision making authority on this document. However, the planning commission, you know, may potentially weigh in on, you know, what you think or or look at the pros and cons. And give some advice to the city council. So. I get, I hope that answers your question in terms of final decision authority. I'm not sure that you asked me. You know, the pros and cons of each one because different methodologies, i.e. i.e., negotiated process versus one where you have a more formulaic approach. Um, but in terms of that, um, who decides? That's kind of the way um we would look at it. We may even uh, we may also talk to EDAC, our Economic Development Advisory Committee, about this. Um, perhaps they should weigh in on advising the council as well.
Great. Thanks, Al. I appreciate that. And and maybe I uh I okay, Greg, was I thought maybe going to add something?
Oh, I'm I can I Al Al answered it pretty well, but I my my uh ultimately, um, if if the process turns out to be a development agreement process, it's it's an agreement between the developer and this the city, which is approved by the city council. But but this, but that agreement may be formed by these policies that that we're looking at.
Great, thank you. And and let me then just to build would be, and so my guess my second question is because one developer won't develop all this one area, but will have multiple projects. What are the tools that uh the planning commission has? Um, in order to create that homogeneity, that geniety, that that sense of cohesiveness that I that was so well brought out in the plan and and uh uh, so again, what can, what do we have at our disposal uh to shepherd this over a period of multiple years and multiple developments?
Well, the first tool would be this plan. Uh, and so the plan itself will have direction in it, in the intent of it is to uh provide some clarity in terms of the desires of the community. What is the vision? Uh, holistically, we we keep saying that word, the ecosystem is another good word, I think. You know, what what do we want to see? How, what direction do we want to see this go in? And then below that, you have um multimodal, you know, modality, you have the environment, you have urban design architecture, place making, as Lisa noted in the presentation. And so um, within each of those categories, we will have something in this plan, we hope to at the end, is to have, you know, very clear policy direction um in each of these areas. And what we'd like to further do, which would make it even better and easier, is to um somehow prioritize the community benefit components of this document in some way. Um, and so with if you have that, um, there's clarity both for the um development community and the marketplace, but also clarity for the planning commission and clarity for um the city council and city staff. Um, and going back to your initial question, um you know, you you basically use this tool for discussions with developers, right? You you they get a copy, you know, that you look, you know it. And um hopefully, at the end, it's pretty clear. It may seem, because it's a vision document, it won't have complete structural clarity, i.e. like a zoning ordinance would have, where it says you can only go to fifty feet. That's, this is um, because it's a vision document, a policy document, um, you wouldn't have that level of specificity. Um, however, it leads you to, it gives you the goals and the guiding principles um so that you may decide that we can now um change our zoning to conform to what we know in this plan. Or change the general plan and put policies from this document that are really important into the general plan as well. Um, so at the end of this process, we are, I think, will know a lot more about other tools that can be added to this tool. Uh, and ones that have more specificity or more legal weighting um than this vision document. So I think you're gonna have this tool, which is the most important one at this point. But other tools at your disposal, once we get to the end, we'll be able to kind of see where we can go next. Hopefully that um helps.
Yeah, that that's uh very helpful. Uh, and it it lets me see how um the work we're doing here or the work you're doing here um allows us to then fit that into both um our considerations going forward, but also the the guidance that city council will will uh use as they consider um the the development process, you know, for the coming five or or more years. Very good. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Yakaponi, I could just add one one more um aspect to this that we don't want to get lost in this um in this kind of development of of this vision plan. The vision plan's more directed to, although not not completely, but it's directed to the community benefits in in a lot of ways. Um, community benefits are what we're going to negotiate in the development agreement. They're not necessarily impacts from the projects per se, but they're but they're community benefits that we're trying to in this vision plan, put out there so the development community knows about them. In the planning process, you still have the ability to um assess impacts from a particular project, which could become conditions of approval of the project. So those are not necessarily community benefits. Um, sometimes there's overlap of those things and that gets sorted out in the development agreement. But just just to look, you know, so the commission can understand that there's kind of two things that go into these processes in the development agreement. Uh, and one of the purposes of having the vision plan here is so that the staff and and um development community can know, hey, this is, these are the types of community benefits that we're looking at uh when developers come into town seeking a development agreement. Because remember, sometimes a developer could come in and just say, well, I'm just, here's what your zoning is, and I'm going to just build with the zoning set. And there's no development agreement in that circumstance. We don't anticipate seeing that for some of these larger projects, though.
Uh, thank you, Greg. That was very helpful. Um, that that's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, do do we have any additional questions for um the planning commissioners before we um switch to the um community input? Kristen, Commissioner Clements, I see you have a a hand up?
I just want to confirm what Greg just said. So my understanding of a development agreement and when it's warranted is when the developer is asking for something that goes over and above what we would normally grant as a city. And that the city and that the city would also be warranted and asking for something over and above what the city would normally get in the ways of fees or benefits. And so so it's not true that everybody that would be covered in this um vision plan area would enter into a development agreement. It would be a developer's decision as to whether they would conform to the normal specifications of the normal zoning and general plan designations that are laid out, or whether they would enter into negotiations and whether and then you or the city and then the city council would determine that a DA was warranted. Is that right?
That's basically correct. I mean, it could tee up in a in a different way, but the the we're trying to anticipate the um developers who are seeking to develop something outside of the of the uh precise zoning standards in that area. Uh, and I mean, in other other, like the Meridian twenty-five project had a development agreement uh and and it was um they they made the development conditions in that were some payments of cash and some improvements to uh the streetscape in the in the area of the building. And I think there were a few other items that were negotiated as well.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to open up for community input?
Please.
We did, we did receive um two written comments. Maybe we can uh questions, we can start with those that first uh from David Crabbe. Um, and I think we've answered this one. Um, but I'll read it. If all proposed projects are approved in the next few years, how many new jobs can be expected to be added to the city? How does this affect future jobs, housing ratio? How many new homes would be needed to maintain a healthy jobs-housing balance? And can the city meet this future need? And I think um Al answered that already, so maybe we don't need to um to repeat ourselves there. Um, the second question is from Martha, and that is what has been implemented to address the significant increase in traffic between Holly Street and industrial and one-on-one and the severe impact it will have on the overpass into Ridwood Chores and Ridwood Chores Parkway. Lisa, do you want to suggest?
Chair, you want us to answer the questions or did you want to just kind of go through them? Um.
Well, if 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 a feedback is possible, then of course.
Sure. Well, I think that it's just one more that just came in, but then we'll see if it has any verbal comments and then through the commission, if they would like staffs for those who can.
Oh, I see. So.
Yeah, but I but what I will say in response to um the question typed in by Martha um in terms of traffic, addressing traffic and traffic impacts. Um, this is a perfect opportunity to um uh address this, these types of concerns about traffic in the area as part of the Alexandria uh EIR um that it will be prepared and a scoping meeting, which is um intended to be the time for the public to come forward and let the city know what they believe should be addressed within the EIR. And of course, traffic circulation is one of the parts that is looked at under um under uh the Environmental Impact Report. So um if that is some, that's something that we can definitely look at in that particular context.
Great, thank you. And I'm I'm new to the moderating role here. I guess um I guess our usual practice is to collect all the feedback um and um without answering specific questions in between. So let's just first get get this additional written and then we'll open up the uh the phone, the phone lines uh from Michael Trevor. What height limit is assumed for this vision plan and that quoted square footage is? Um, and so so like I said, we'll collect all the feedbacks and then um so um is there anybody in the waiting room who would like to speak? Um, and if so, um, you can use the raised hand icon or a star nine on your phone. And um Sarah, do you know, is there anybody in the waiting room?
Yes, there are three attendees. Up first is Sonia Elks.
Sonia.
Hi.
Go ahead. You have uh two minutes, please.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate um how Lisa, of course, and your team um present every time and the the outreach to the public, all the meetings. I I wanted to echo the commissioners' perspectives. They've been fantastic. I'm really grateful for what the city's doing. Um, specifically, I just wanted to make two comments to the planning commission. I know there's a chance for public uh to speak up at the EIR presentation next week, I believe. Um, but two thoughts I just wanted to say about, I'm very interested in the circulation issue. I feel like California has less of a housing crisis as a circulation, transportation problem. We our housing crisis wouldn't be nearly what it is if we could circulate our people better. And I appreciate all the multimodal efforts going into this project. And just wanted to also reiterate that to bring people in from, so not just having an excellent structure in inside the district where things are are happening, but also to there, like from two eighty to one-on-one, right? Where where the public transit, as I think your um one of your commissioners mentioned, is 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 an enormous uh priority. So public transit lanes, it will be really, really crucial because nobody's going to take transit if it takes three times longer, which is currently sometimes four times longer um does. So transit-only lanes leading into this this district, I think, are also important. Um, and then I also wanted to just let you know that a recent traffic analysis was commissioned by the city managers for the peninsula cities of Redwood City uh through Mountain View. So Mount Meadow Park, Palo Alto, Mountain View um on the twelve-point mile stretch between Redwood City, yeah, and Mountain View on El Camino. And there's high um urgency to do the Grand Boulevard Initiative, the El Camino-Rial stretch for public transit, transit-only lanes, uh bicycle infrastructure, or you know, multimodal, food or et cetera shares. Um, so I wanted to just make sure that's on your radar, maybe reach out to the city of that, if you look, I can, I'll send you the link, but um the El Camino corridor is on schedule to be um, you know, to be urgently looked at. And San Carlos is one city down from Redwood City. We don't want to be left out of that. But hugely potential possibility. So just to keep that on the scope of the cities, you know, for this peninsula, uh El Camino um transit, multimodal, friendly district to our, to be accessible through El Camino, this is on the also on the table. I'll send you those links, though. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sarah, the next person, please.
David Crabbe.
Yes, good. Good evening. Uh, I want to follow up a little bit more on the jobs, housing issues. Maybe you bring some things to your thinking that you haven't thought about before. Uh, number one, the Al is correct that uh San Carlos currently appears to have pretty much a good jobs, housing balance. In fact, he sent me the data on that a year and a half or so ago. Uh, but what he what comes along with that is interestingly, and uh Al can correct me on my numbers, but it was something like ninety percent of the people who live in San Carlos commute out of San Carlos to work. And ninety percent of the people who work in San Carlos commute into San Carlos to work. So even though we have a jobs, housing balance in San Carlos, the people who live in San Carlos are not working in San Carlos. And the thinking behind that right now is that the uh the jobs that are currently available in San Carlos don't pay enough money to cover the million-dollar homes that are in San Carlos. That's why the workers have to commute in. And also that the people who are living in San Carlos have to go to more expensive areas to get the jobs to pay for these expensive houses. So that's that's one issue of this. The uh following up on that, then, bringing in a biotech uh in the area, uh I mean, can have some uh good uh impact in that the people who move into the biotech will possibly be able to afford housing in San Carlos. But when they come in and they are going after the housing that exists now in San Carlos, they're going to put tremendous pressure on the cost of housing in San Carlos, push it up even more, which means that the people who we'd like to have here that are low income, work in the city will definitely be uh moved out of the city. The displaced from the city to something else will become even more gentrified than we are now. So this issue of jobs, housing is is a big, big issue in terms of the social dynamic of San Carlos. Do we want to be a a gentrified enclave on the peninsula? Or do we want to have some mixed use of uh housing? And the amount of affordable housing that we can build at this point, under current conditions, is not going to come close to meeting the need for the low-income housing uh people. So that is a one concern I have. The other concern, I'm I'm, I don't know how much time I have.
Uh, that that's about your two minutes.
Okay, I'll 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 stop here.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. Sarah, is there an additional person in the waiting?
Yes, Rana Gundrum.
Rana, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
I needed to unmute myself. Um, yeah, so I I share the concerns of of the other speakers. Um, the one thing that struck me uh when the um presentation was talking about uh challenges that it did not address the um traffic concerns that were brought up in the community um sessions. Uh, there was quite a bit of talk about traffic on one-on-one and particularly Holly Street. Um, both in and out of San Carlos. Um there there's only one way to north one-on-one out of San Carlos, and that's on Holly Street. And then there are two ways to south one-on-one, Holly and Britton. And I mean, the traffic is already horrendous and it's only going to be worse. Um, so you know, I I know that there's the the EIR and that's going to be looked at as as part of it, but it was disappointing because there was so much conversation about it in the community meetings, and it was not brought up at all in this presentation. Um, so I I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, thank you for your feedback. Sarah, is there anybody else in the waiting room?
Yes, Patty M.
Go ahead, Patty.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. So I'm concerned that the, this 9,000 new jobs by 20 that was discussed in the 2009 general plan up until 2030, that's way more jobs than new housing that's being asked of our city to develop the 2760 in the next eight years. So I, it's so weird for me to hear people say, oh, yeah, our job is a housing balance is fine. And all these people will be taking transit because they're so close to downtown. And we used to hear, oh, the transit was important. People will take it if it's, if they're five minutes to transit. You know, that's why we have to have the transit village so high. And now it's like, oh, well, now we have a 15-minute window for people walking. So those kind of shifts in understanding of like how to get the city what it wants, which is more revenue, really bother me. And I think I don't, it seems like the commission, you ask, you're asking good questions, but it seems like you're not aware of this Alexandria project that's going in where like the whole from industrial to Old County at the Kellymore site. And I just feel like that is so big and I don't understand how like a bunch of those happening based on this vision of the industrial arts, whatever area, that, that really scares me. So all I can say is I don't see anybody from the east side on the commission. But if you, if you're going to stay here for 10 years up until 2030, you're going to be getting big housing near you too. And you're not going to like it. And all the, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Yes.
Sarah, is there anybody else?
Yes. Debbie Balducci.
Hi Debbie, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much for the excellent presentation. The primary point I have tonight is related to the idea of all of this is being built in an existing flood zone. We have a pumping station there that is required to pump out water. And we live on the creek upstream. So that's the reason I'm so concerned about it. I've seen down Redwoods. We've got creek bank erosion. A PG and E line was uprooted. It took 10 hours for them to turn off the gas. So I think in the EIRs, they really aren't taking into consideration what the flood risks are. Because sometimes the water in the creek can get up to 20 feet, 20 feet in an atmospheric river. And we've just been in such a dry spell for so long. People don't realize that. And the other thing is we already have flooding from King Tides that exists now. And that's only going to get worse because of recent research that just came out this week. So one thing that would help is if you could help the public understand why it's appropriate ecologically to build in flood zones. Whether or not you're going to replace the existing pumping stations that exist from Pulbus Creek and Smith Slough. And whether or not you're going to not allow undergrade, underground parking or subgrade infrastructure because of the water. And the other thing that was concerning too is that along the industrial, there was talk about all these trees that are going to be put down there. But at one of the meetings, they said, well, trees won't really do well down there because saltwater has already intruded into the really shallow groundwater table. So I'd really appreciate it if the public was just more aware of this is a flood zone. Who will have to pay for it when these areas get flooded? And especially biotech. Will it be the taxpayers? Will it be the developers? Who? So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Sarah, next person, if there is one?
No more callers.
Okay, so I'll read off the additional written comments that we've received. It seems like apartments would be a good addition to the area, but I have not seen much discussion or support for housing. Thank you. That's from Rich and Patty M. Thank you. So then we may have many more jobs in housing. All right, thank you. Are there any additional comments that we want to capture for tonight from the commission, commissioners or are we ready to, to close this topic?
Chair Roof, if I may, I would like to pick up one of the questions in the chat and ask staff to comment. Rich's comment about why apartments are not part of this in this vision area and why it is really an industrial area. Could staff talk about the general plan a little bit and why it is not a mixed-use area? I've actually been wondering that myself. Thank you.
Al, did you want to take this one or would you like for me to?
Well, I think your work on the housing element is a good start. So if you, maybe you could outline how we're approaching housing in the community at this point.
Sure. And then I think Kristin, I think maybe it was just a question, if I could just kind of confirm your question. Maybe Al could help answer that part, this part, the next part, which is why wasn't the east side ever planned for housing? I think that was your question.
Yes, in the current general plan.
Right, right.
Exactly. Why is this industrial?
So I'll start real quick, just for the benefit of, you know, the commission and the audience watching tonight. So right now, another project that the city is working on is an update to the housing element. And this is underway since late 2020, with the kickoff of our first workshop in November. We will be having another workshop most likely in mid-August. So we're really kind of right in the thick of it. So essentially what we must do is update our housing element. And that is to update it with the goal of providing, making sure that we have enough land and zoning in place to accommodate at least 2,715 new units, net new units on top of what we already have today from 2023 to 2031. So we are looking at all of the available sites and areas that are already zoned for residential and see what we can do in terms of looking at ways where we can encourage and incentivize more housing on the areas that are already zoned for housing. So by design, we did not immediately go into an industrial area to figure out, you know, if housing could be developed in that area. We want to first start with where our neighborhoods are, where there's already existing infrastructure for housing in place, where that land use compatibility was already a factor. But so, so the next step in the housing element process is really to go to the community, look at some case studies that we're currently working on for El Camino Real and talk about the community's support for taller buildings or higher density, for possible changes in parking to make that happen, to really incentivize the unit, looking at the unit mix, the average unit size. All of this is going into big case studies. So we'll be able to kind of share that in mid-August and really have that conversation. If the community decides that absolutely no way, you know, they don't want taller buildings or more density, then we will have to look, you know, start to look elsewhere to accommodate that, the need for additional housing. It's something that we have to meet. Our city now is, you know, obviously cares very much about making sure that we have enough housing in a wide range of incomes as we continue to grow and evolve as a city. So that is currently underway. The website is www.sancarlos2040.org. And if you're not on our list already, you can go to that website and sign up and be part of that process. And then I'll turn it over to Al for the remainder of the question as to why, why haven't we seen, you know, residential zoned in this study year?
Thank you, Lisa. So to answer your question, the great thing about San Carlos is that we have been a well-balanced community from a land use standpoint. We're very, very fortunate to have a good balance between the residential area and commercial, industrial and retail land uses. Those land uses have sustained our community in terms of its economic and sustainability for decades. And, you know, when you see a community that's overweighted in one direction or the other, there's typically an imbalance in terms of quality of life, the character of the community, and many communities are, you know, they're seeking balance. And so we're in an enviable position as a community, just because of the natural asset that we have in terms of how our land is planned and where we are and some of the other things that we have, like the train and the freeways and such. So the way we're planned out is, is the, in that slide that we showed earlier in the presentation where you see 10 plus of our retail sales taxes, where that comes from is the east side area and it has been that way for, again, for decades. And it's very important that it's not all about property taxes, right? It's a lot about economic sustainability in land use. Decision-making is very important as well. And so we have been able to use the land areas that we have and have been planned over the years historically. And we've been able to survive and thrive as a community. And so back in 2009, we were in the middle of the Great Recession. And at that time, we looked at all our land uses and we did the thing that we typically do look in a general plan is we look at, you know, how much land area is residential and how much is commercial? And if you look at that number, about, only about 16% to 20% of our land area is commercial. The rest of it is residential or other uses. So again, a very small, unique area of our community generating this retail sales tax. And with viable businesses that are unique in and among themselves, i.e. building and construction industry and other things like that. So back in 2009, when we took a look at the community, we said, well, at this point, and you can't really see the future ahead, right? I mean, if we could, it would be great, but we, we do the best we can. And at that time, we thought, and we are also in a structural crisis as a city. We had about a three and a half million dollar deficit. And the city was, you know, at that time, it was a pretty dire situation in terms of our budget, our city budget, and to provide police and fire services and other services, parks, libraries, et cetera. So when we looked at the, where we could get our housing, where we could get, meet our RENA number at that time, which is much lower, and where we could do economic development, where we could say, and we wanted to at that time, we wanted as a community, the direction and the philosophy and rationale was to look at our economy and see how we could do better so that our city could do better in terms of the services and amenities that we provide our community. And so there was a decision-making process that went on and we did look at different alternatives. So we looked at alternatives where more of the land area went to certain types of uses and maybe it was more mixed use, maybe it was a little bit of residential on the east side. We did actually look at that at that time. And the decision was made at that time to, to do a little bit of residential on that side, but not, you know, wholesale change because we didn't think, or the community didn't think that it would be economically viable and advisable to do it. So East San Carlos Avenue, the greater East San Carlos neighbors will remember this discussion. There was an industrial, East San Carlos Avenue between Old County Road and Industrial was an industrial street. It was a light manufacturing. There was a lot of those businesses there which remain today. Area was rezoned to mixed use in conversation with the businesses and the residents in the area. And then some area along the frontage of Old County Road nearest to the train station was also changed in the general plan to allow for mixed-use development. So it was a measured approach at that time, based on the factors that, that we knew about at that time. Sorry for the, the deep history there, but it's all quite interesting. And I think it's, it's interesting to know for our today's decisions.
Al, thank you because I, it's, it is important to understand how the economics matter and how the city's fiscal condition matters. And we're seeing now the decision not to integrate housing really makes biotech space, which is light industrial in nature, be more flexible and more valuable in use. This would not be happening necessarily if multifamily had gone up next door to these sites. And so while I'm a big housing proponent, sometimes it makes sense to do more of a single type of use in an area. And then also the flood zone, as Debbie was noting in the speaker, you know, there, there are certain reasons for it, the way that it looks. And I love that you've been here long enough and you're so skilled and knowledgeable. And you share that with us. So thank you for that.
Okay, any additional comments on this subject? If not, I think we can close this session. Do we? There's no formal action. Do we need a motion or do we just move on in the agenda?
I, I think Greg was about to jump on, but I was going to suggest closing the public hearing and then we can move on the agenda. Oh, sorry, Greg. It's not a public hearing, but.
You could just move on to the next item, but through the chair declaring that we're finished. And then we'll go to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll, we'll close the, close the public comment. Thank you very much to the members of the community who contributed to that. And we'll move on to our next agenda topic, which I believe is the report's correspondence and general information.
You can hear me. I wasn't sure if I was on mute. Thank you, Chair Roof. I, if Al has anything to add, you know, you can follow, follow up my comment here. But what I can share is that the city council did recently vote to extend the protected tree urgency ordinance. So staff will be working on an update to that component of, of the zoning ordinance, our protected tree ordinance provisions are contained in our zoning ordinance. And is there anything else to report on from Council Al that you want, think we should share with the commission?
No, I think, I think that's, that's good. That's all I can think of right now.
Thank you, Chair Roof. That would be all for item A from staff.
Chair Roof, I think you're on mute.
Are there planning commission comments or reports?
I have nothing.
None for me.
None for me. Okay, moving along. Are there, is there correspondence, Lisa?
No further correspondence. I'm, I'm pleased that all of the commissioners were able to pick up and obtain their copy of the binders. And we will continue to. No further correspondence. I'm, I'm pleased that all of the commissioners were able to pick up and obtain their copy of the binders and we will continue to provide. Additional information that you can add to that binder as this plan progresses. And certainly if any of the commissioners have any comments or information they feel that they would need, you know, feel free to email me individually, of course. So with no correspondence for number C, I'll just jump right into item number D. I will just remind the commission and for the benefit of the public, we do have a planning commission hearing. Coming up on July nineteenth. There are two items on the agenda. Your pocket will be, should be available tomorrow. But again, the scoping meeting for the Alexandria Environmental Impact Report will be first on the agenda. Followed by a public hearing, item four, ten thirty, Britton Avenue. This is a project in the study area that is not requesting a plan development, plan approval by the city council. And in fact, it originally was, but it's been scaled down. So that is why it's before the commission this coming Monday. If you have any questions on that, feel free to reach out to staff. Both Lisa Costas Sanders and I can be available if any of the commissioners have any questions prior to Monday night's hearings. And then following that on August second, we still have on the agenda. The Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan. I think most of you have requested a hard copy, which you should have. And again, but if anybody needs one still. Please feel free to reach out and let me know and I'll make sure I get a hard copy of the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan. And again. The planning commission will be asked to make a recommendation to the city council on that plan. And that plan is being led by Adam Locar, our sustainability analyst out of the city manager's office. So he and the consulting team will be at the hearing that evening of August, August second to present that project to the commission. That is all I have this evening. Again, if anyone has any comments, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Lisa, if I may, I have one question. You said in mid-August would be the next public meeting for the housing element. Can we have a date for that?
We're looking at August eleventh. It's fresh out of our meeting this afternoon. So starting with the public outreach and the messaging for that and getting those announcements out, but that would be Wednesday, August eleventh. Probably another six o'clock start time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. And I believe that we can adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, David. Good job.
Well done, David.
First time.
Congratulations, David. Good job.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all.